And of course, how about azaleas dwarf ever blooming red ruffle azaleas are still priced at a super low three ninety-nine each. Bush daisies and more are all on VOGO buy one get one free. Come see for yourself for super savings all over this beautiful five acre garden. Bob wines on southeast thirty-eighth street in Ocala. Daily till four thirty, Saturdays till three, soon celebrating seventy years in the same The Ocala Golf Club, one of Ocala's premier golf courses from its pristine eighteen hole course layout to its amazing pro shop. Jason Lindhart and the staff at Ocala Golf offer everything that you need for your golf outing. That's the Ocala Golf Club. Experience country club style golf at municipal prices. You won't go wrong with the Ocala Golf Club. Call them for a tee time today, three five two four zero one six nine one seven. Are you suffering from neck, back, or leg pain? Go Green CBD store can help you with holistic, all natural, lab tested products that help with pain, stress, anxiety, inflammation, PTSD, and so much more. We stock smokable products, gummies, chocolate, coffee, tea, even pain cream. Yes, we even have treats and oils for your dogs or cats. Go Green CBD is located in the paddock mall in the center court. We're open every day. Come in today for a free sample.
Now you've done it. Have you lost your mind? He's back and you're listening again. A legend in his own mind. Don't believe me? Just ask him. Here's Tom Schmitz live on W O C A, the source.
Welcome back to Ocala Talks on a Wednesday, the day after. Wow. If you missed it last night, fireworks towards the end of the city council meeting as a city council member Barry Mansfield talked, brought up the fact that he wanted to look at replacing Sandra Wilson, the city manager. And he had an audit or some sort of document that he alluded to as being the reasoning, one of the reasons behind the no confidence he had in the city manager. And then his motion to relieve her of duties was seconded. It was put to a vote and just that quick Sandra Wilson was out of a job. In a three to two vote, Jim Hilty and Barry Mansfield, and I'm having my names are escaping me right now. It's a tough morning, folks. Tough morning I got here. Things weren't working, but they voted three to two to relieve her of her job duties. And the two dissent, the Kristen Dreyer, Barry Mansfield, and James Hilty voted to fire Wilson. Iri Bithia and Jay Musley, they voted no. Mansfield, like I said, made the motion to get rid of Wilson and Hilty was the second to it. And Hilty was really the wildcard here. You know, this had happened before when Matthew Wardell and Justin Graybell were on the council. They had brought up this no confidence vote before and it failed three to two. Well, now with the shakeup and change on the county city council, it was brought up again. And my understanding is there's a, there's, there's a, there's been an audit done, something about a whistleblower and an audit done. I don't have the full understanding of everything because I don't have a copy of what Barry Mansfield was speaking of last night, but there was a whistleblower complaint. And so basically they said either Sandra Wilson knew about what was in this complaint or if she didn't know, she had no control over the people under her that did the things that were in this whistleblower complaint. So either way, they voted to replace Sandra Wilson. They put in interim as interim city manager, Pete Lee, who had been an assistant city manager. And that, 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 that throws some red flags up for me because Pete Lee was just made an assistant manager in recent times. Why didn't Bill Kaufman get a look? Is there trouble in Mudville for Bill Kaufman? Because he was Sandra's next in line, he thought. And now I'm to understand that I, through sources, that whatever this paperwork was that Barry Mansfield alluded to, that it went to, it has been turned over to the authorities to see if there was any criminal wrongdoing. And, you know, there may be arrests that are imminent. This story has got a lot of legs and we, you know, we really thought this story had went away. You hadn't heard much. People thought that from all the feedback I'm getting from people this morning and last night, people thought that, you know, this was going to come up again in October when Sandra's contract was up for renewal, that there was a chance she might not be renewed, that they would do a search for a city manager then. But then last night, this happened. And I want to know, you know, first off, this is a whistleblower investigation. Whistleblowers, you know, that's not something to be taken lightly. And as we get more and more information, because the information will come out, as we get more and more of this information and we see the inner workings of what was going on at the city, are we going to find that there are criminal charges that need to be drawn? Is somebody going to go to jail over this? I think that this is something that the state's attorney has got to take a look at this. All whistleblower complaints need to be looked at thoroughly and I'm to understand that this whistleblower complaint has been turned over to the authorities. And if somebody needs to go to jail, lock them up. You know, I got this, there's a lot more, there's a lot more, there's a lot more pedals to this onion that have been peeled away so far. I feel like this is just the beginning of the peeling of the onion. And if this were people under Sandra, and my understanding was this was situations that were done not by Sandra Wilson herself, but by people directly underneath her, are those people looking to maybe be replaced? Or go ahead and do the right thing and fall on your sword and resign?
Do we know what was in?
We do not know what was in the, the, the
Report.
Report yet. It was just, it was just referenced. And I'm sure that they don't want people to know what's in the report because it's been turned over to the authorities.
Right. They don't want to give away.
For review by, by the authorities to see if there's any criminal situation that occurred.
Right.
So they don't want to, they don't want to give away what's in the, the whistleblower complaint.
So we're just left to kind of wonder.
Well, no, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna come out, but right now, because it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing investigation, I'm sure that they, 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 they have to do it this way.
Right.
To protect the integrity of the situation, the investigation. So, but if there was wrongdoing and, you know, you can find culpability with people in the higher up positions at the city and there was criminal, there was criminal wrongdoing, this could be, this could be something that's ongoing for a while. And it's not like the city doesn't have enough problems already with the fire fee situation. I mean, you know, this all, this all started really, the shoe dropped and started making the dumpster fire that is city government with the firing of Shane Alexander. And if, if this whistleblower complaint, I bet there's more than this whistleblower complaint than leaving a vehicle idling for too long, which was one of the four things they used to fire the fire chief. He left his vehicle and idle too long. He talked to some fire personnel about how they should maybe donate to a charity. You know, if that's the reason you fired the fire chief, good night. Wonder what's in this whistleblower thing? Somebody served too hot coffee.
Obviously they thought it was important enough to, to fire her immediately after.
Yeah, right. And, and I think it's because she, it, it, she either knew and so she needed to be fired or she didn't know, which means she has no control over her staff.
Right.
And if you have no control over your staff, you need to be fired.
Yep.
So, but I, I promise you, there's going to be more in this whistleblower thing than just leaving a car idling too long.
Oh yeah. I suspect it's.
I promise you this whistleblower thing won't be written on fifth grade notebook paper
Right.
In chicken scratch.
Yeah.
Like one of the formal complaints against the fire chief was. I promise you this whistleblower report won't be backdated three or four days after the incident, whatever the incident was. I promise that isn't going to happen because my understanding is this was, this whistleblower complaint went through the city auditor's office, the proper channels. And if you wonder what I'm referring to, when the fire chief got let go, when the proof that they offered up for the reasons they let the fire chief go, one of the four pieces of information that were offered up was a handwritten notebook paper of a complaint from a year and a half ago that was dated two days after they fired the chief claiming that this is what happened. I'm not making that up, folks. You can't make that kind of stuff up. So there's still a long way to go with this situation and did, was it handled right by city council? I think so. There was a, an internal memo. The city council was privy to the memo or the investigation or whistleblower complaint. The city council member thought that was a fireable offense, brought it up at council. Now, some people say Jay Musley, one sitting council member said, this shouldn't have been done this way. We should have put it on the agenda for the next council meeting. If somebody needs to go, they need to go. You don't need to wait two weeks. Jay Musley has the luxury though of not running for office again, or so he says he's not going to run for office again. So he can make comments like that. But if this, and the report will come out, but once, once it's out and we see it, three council members thought enough of this report that it was important enough to vote to fire last night, not wait two weeks to put it on the agenda. Good morning, you're on Ocala Talks.
Good morning, Tom. This is Sonny calling. I know Mr. Hilty for a long time. On and off, I've had occasions to talk with him on different things. And I honestly believe that this man is one person who would not vote to remove somebody if there wasn't.
Significant evidence to do so.
Just cause.
Yeah, I, I believe Jim, and Jim Hilty said, I've based all my opinion on this vote I'm about to give you on what I've seen since I've been back in office as a city councilman. This is just my observations from the time that I've had back in my, in my seat as a city council member. I don't have any confidence in Sandra Wilson to lead this city. That was what he said. It didn't have anything to do with vendettas or anything for James Hilty. He saw, what he saw in his mind was enough that it warranted relieving this young lady of her duties.
Well, like, like I said, I, I've known him and talked with him and various things over the years with Mr. Hilty. And I think he's as honest as the days long and there had to be some very good reason for this, for his vote on that city council meeting.
I promise you, Jim Hilty. Thanks, Sonny. I promise you, Jim Hilty, nor Barry Mansfield, nor Kristen Dreyer voted to fire Sandra Wilson because she left her city car running and idle too long. I promise you that. We'll take a break. We'll be back more with your calls, six two two nine six two two. What do you think about last night? Sandra Wilson relieved of duties as city manager for the city of Ocala. We'll be right back after this timeout.
Helping Veterans USA, call three five two four three three two three two zero. We help veterans and their families with limited financial assistance, counseling, employment referrals, and a food and clothing bank. You can help in making a huge difference in the veterans' lives we serve by donating food, clothing, household items, or direct financial assistance. All donations are tax deductible. Veterans Helping Veterans USA, three five two four three three two three two zero. Thank you for your attention and God bless America.
Each morning we wake up thankful to live in a free nation with liberty and justice for all. But sometimes those liberties can be put in jeopardy and you may have questions about what to do or who to call. Let Doc Blanchard of Blanchard, Miriam, Adeline Kirkland help you find the answers. Attorneys at law since nineteen seventy-four and located in downtown Ocala. If you have legal issues, don't go it alone. Call three five two seven three two seven two one eight. Blanchard, Miriam, Adeline Kirkland, helping protect your liberties every day.
Hey there, Congresswoman Kat Camac here, your conservative voice in our nation's capital. Tax filing season is underway and while the IRS works through its millions of backlog cases from prior years, our office is here to help you navigate the IRS. From delayed tax returns, missing stimulus payments, and so much more, you can reach out to our team at camac.house.gov for help. I'm Kat Camac and it is my honor to serve you.
This ad is paid for by official funds authorized by the U.S. House of Representatives.
Attention passengers for flight one three seven zero, the plane has been delayed at its departure point and will be at least two hours late. We apologize for any inconvenience.
Are you serious? It took us over an hour to get here, two hours going through security and getting our tickets, and now we have to wait another two hours?
Yeah, it's beautiful here, but we're inside this overcrowded airport all day because the plane is stuck in bad weather.
This is the last time we ever do this. When we get back, we're going to Ocala Aviation and getting our pilot's license.
Yeah, we've been talking about that long enough. It's about time we did it. Then we could just fly ourselves and never have to deal with this mess again.
Right. No long lines, no full body groping security, no baggage checks.
Not to mention never losing your luggage. Remind me again why we haven't done that?
Well, we're idiots.
Oh, right.
Attention all passengers for flight one three seven zero, it looks like the plane is going to be delayed a little bit longer. The airline has lost the pilot's luggage. Isn't it time you got your pilot's license? Call Ocala Aviation today, three five two eight six one seven four eight four. That's three five two eight six one seven four eight four. Hey, you earned it. Call today.
Get it for less at the DIY Home Center outlet. Get top quality real wood cabinets, the same or less than the big box stores are selling the cheap stuff. And that's not all. Drywall screws, big box stores are six forty-seven a pound. At DIY only four ninety-nine. Plus DIY has the largest selection of mobile home parts and accessories anywhere. From carpet to doors, get the DIY supplies you need for less. The DIY Home Center outlet. We are your building material closeout store. Twenty-one ninety-one Northwest Tenth Street, just two miles east of I-75.
Now you've done it. Have you lost your mind? He's back and you're listening again. A legend in his own mind. Don't believe me? Just ask him. Here's Tom Schmitz live on W O C A, the source.
Welcome back to Ocala Talks. I was going to go out to the phone lines, but my caller hung up. Call back caller, we had you on hold and you hung up on us. He had a very good point he wanted to make too about the firing of Sandra Wilson. If you don't, did not know or didn't, weren't listening to the program fifteen minutes ago, I announced that last night at the end of the city council meeting, towards the end of the city council meeting, a no confidence vote was taken for Sandra Wilson, the city manager. And she was relieved of her duties by a vote of three to two. And Sonny, a past caller, made a very good point. Barry Mansfield, he voted, he, he actually is the one that brought it up to question whether Sandra Wilson should continue in her job. Kristen Dreyer and James Hilty also voted in the affirmative to relieve her of duties. And as Sonny said earlier, James Hilty is above reproach, in my opinion here. He's not going to fire somebody just because somebody wants him to. He's going to have to have reason to fire somebody. And obviously whatever he read in that memo gave him enough reasons to say she needed to be relieved of her duties. Good morning, you're on Ocala Talks.
Good morning, Tom. How are you today?
Wonderful and yourself?
I'm good. I'd like to make a recommendation to the city council if I can.
Concerning?
The new city manager when we hire one.
Okay, I'm, the city council listens to this show, I'm sure, if not the mayor does, and he'd probably relate to them. What's your recommendation? More money?
How about, no, how about if we get a city manager that at least lives in our county, but preferably in the city limits since they are going to be the city manager?
Ouch.
Well, it's a fact.
Sandra Wilson did not even live in Marion County. You're right. She didn't live in Marion County.
That's right.
Not only she didn't live in Ocala, she didn't live in Marion County.
Yeah, that, that should be a requirement, I would think.
I think that should be part of, I personally think that should be an amendment added to the charter, but that's just me. That's just me.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
If you're going to, if you're going to, and I think you said just the county, I think you should go a little farther. I think you should have to live in the city limits of Ocala.
Well, there, there's something to be said for pride and ownership, and if you don't even live in the county that you're supposedly working for, what does that say?
That's very well, point very well taken. Although some people say, well, but if she lived in Micanopee, nope, that's in Elatso County.
That's right.
It's in Elatso County. Thanks for the call.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I, I don't know why that's not part of the city charter that, you know, that once you get the job, that you have to relocate and move to the city of Ocala or at least to Marion County.
Yeah.
It just makes sense to me. And the caller brought up a very good point. It just, you know, pride in where you live and where you work. You know, you work for the city of Ocala as the city manager, but you don't have enough pride in the city of Ocala to live in it?
Right.
You know, that sounds like Congress with Obamacare. Here's Obamacare, it's great insurance, but we've exempted ourselves from it. Here's the insurance plan, but we're not going to do it because we got better insurance.
Yeah. Well, I think they get some of the best insurance.
Right, they do. So six two two nine six two two is the number to call. What are your thoughts? Was this something that was unwarranted? Should they have just waited, even if they had evidence of, of situations where maybe people under Sandra Wilson were doing things that weren't above board? And that still remains to be seen because it's been turned over to the authorities now. Is there jail time coming for somebody? Is there indictments coming? We don't know because we don't know how the investigation's going. But even if her contract was up and, and the end of September into October, you know, now, now they're going to have to negotiate whether a, a, a plan to, as she exits, to take care of her because they fired her earlier from her contract. They've got to come up with the salary to pay Pete Lee because he's now the interim. And then you got to do it all again in October when you search for a new city manager. Now the process can start, I guess it does get the process started earlier.
So now are they paying two people at the same time?
Well, they have to, they have to give her severance package.
Right.
And then Pete Lee now is in that position, he needs to get, the money he was making as assistant city manager is going to have to be different than what he makes as a city manager.
As an interim, though?
I would think so. He's doing the job, he should get paid for doing the job.
Yeah, you would think, yeah.
So, and then you have to do it all again in October. Now, there's a real possibility that Pete Lee could be the choice in October. But does Pete Lee want the job in October? Last night he was asked if he would take, if he would take the job. And he said, he said, when, before his appointment, he was asked if he would accept the job if it was offered to him, he walked to the podium, told council members that he would serve the city at their desire.
Well.
So, you know, so is this a job that Pete Lee's the front runner for? All of that still remains to be seen. But I tell you this, she was let go in a three to two vote. Doesn't get much thinner than that.
Yeah, that's cool.
One vote either way could have turned, you know, could have, we'd have been talking about a different story about how she survived another no confidence vote.
Right.
But instead we're talking about she's out of a job. Pete Lee got recommended to take her place. Five, nothing unanimous vote to accept Pete Lee as the, as the city manager, the interim city manager. So that tells you the city council has a lot of confidence in Pete Lee.
Yeah, maybe they wanted him anyway.
Well, two people didn't want to fire Sandra.
Yeah.
But once she, once it was done, once the decision was made to fire her, then it was five, nothing to accept Pete Lee as the new city manager. And by the way, Sandra Wilson was very gracious last night. From all accounts, she, she thanked the city of Ocala for offering her the opportunity to be city manager. She thanked the city of Ocala and its, and its constituents for her career that she'd been here over twenty years. She, she was very, stepping down, she was very gracious. So, you know, and you don't, in those situations, you don't always have to be gracious.
Right.
Because she'd already been through this once before. So, you know, on her, from her end, she exited in the best possible way she could after getting fired.
Right.
And kudos to her for doing that.
Absolutely.
For not becoming, for making that not even the bigger story.
Yes. Yeah, because it would have been.
It would have been. I'm very interested though, to see what this means for Bill Kaufman. Because Bill Kaufman, I mean, he was second, he was, he was, he was her second for the most part. And city council passed him right over.
I wonder why they passed him right over.
I don't know, we'll find out. We'll be right back after this timeout on Ocala Talks.
USA Radio News with Lance Pride. President Biden will convene top U.S. military leaders today in the annual White House gathering that takes on special significance as the war in Ukraine rages on. In attendance will be Defense Secretary Lloyd Austin, General Mark Milley, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, and senior military leaders. The commander of the last Ukrainian force in Mariupol pleaded Wednesday with world leaders to help, saying that their end is near. The thirty-sixth separate Marine Brigade, Ukraine's final stronghold in Mariupol, resisted earlier demands to surrender and had held out despite being vastly outnumbered ten to one. The Star Wars franchise Mandalorian has lost one of its actors.
Victory through combat is impossible. We will be captured. The child will be lost. Sadly, there is no scenario where the child is saved and which I survive.
Fifty-one-year-old Rio Hackford, the voice behind the droid bounty hunter, passed away last week in Huntington Beach, California. USA Radio News.
With PatriotSoftware.com, accounting and payroll, keep your time and money.
Mike Capel here, serial entrepreneur. I started my first business in the basement of a factory over thirty years ago. We had no heat and no air conditioning. Instead of customers, our office visitors were rats, birds, flies, and snakes. Our office flooded often and we used blankets as our office walls. We were broke and needed customers. Years later, I formed my fifth successful business, Patriot Software, which has attracted tens of thousands of customers with our easy accounting and payroll software used by accountants and non-accountants alike. Go to PatriotSoftware.com, use promo code RADIO and get two months of accounting and payroll software free. That's PatriotSoftware.com.
Dot com, accounting and payroll, keep your time and money.
USFL football starts week two on Friday afternoon and runs through the weekend. More than half of the American states are sending a strong message to President Biden and his administration.
The heads of twenty-six states are joining together in what's being called the American Governors Border Strike Force. Arizona Republican Governor Doug Ducey details the new coalition.
Today we are announcing the American Governors Border Strike Force. This is a majority of America's governors stepping up to do what the Biden administration refuses to do.
That audio courtesy of Fox News. The goal, they say, is to share intelligence and invest in analysis as a way to stop human and drug smuggling. Membership includes border states like Texas and Arizona, but also includes states that are far away from Mexico such as Montana and North Dakota. From the USA Radio News Phoenix Bureau, I'm Tim Berg.
A twenty twenty-two, that's coming up on this land of ours.
Farmers' produce safety inspections are here. Prepare your farm with an on-farm readiness review. The Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and University of Florida are partnering to provide this onsite preparation service for free. Our team of produce safety experts offer individualized support to make sure your operation meets the regulatory requirements. Contact us to help prepare your farm today. Request your free visit at www.fda cs.gov/offrr. That's www.fda cs.gov/offrr.
Every year on April twenty
Every year on April 22nd, Earth Day marks the anniversary of the birth of the modern environmental movement. Earth Day was first observed on April 22nd, 1970, when an estimated 20 million people nationwide attended the inaugural events at tens of thousands of sites, including elementary and secondary schools, universities, and community sites across the U.S. Of course, back in 1970, there was no EPA, so no Clean Air Act or Clean Water Act. There were no legal or regulatory mechanisms to protect our environment. So Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day as a way to force this issue onto the national agenda. But Earth Day is more than just an event celebrated in our country. It has become an annual global event that celebrates the environmental movement and raises awareness about pollution and ways to maintain a clean habitat. The theme for Earth Day 2022 is Invest in Our Planet. It is noted there are various simple things you can do to help protect the earth. This includes the three Rs: reduce, reuse, and recycle. Learn how to cut down on items you throw away each day. Other ways include conserving water, using long-lasting light bulbs, and simply planting a tree. Learn more at EarthDay.org. Filling in for Sabrina Halberson, I'm Randall Wiseman for Southeast AgNet.
While we may disagree a lot, we do agree Rural Kings are favorite place for spring planning.
Yeah, but we've got to focus. Roses, a couple flats of impatience, and a space.
A shovel? I'm thinking tiller.
Oh, we do not need a tiller.
Wait, a mower. Those new zero turns are sweet.
Focus. Roses, mulch, shovel, impatience.
Jeez, talk about impatient.
Can I help you?
Yeah, chainsaws.
Let's go.
I'm almost done.
You are ridiculous.
When it really counts. Depend on The Source for the latest weather updates. Keeping you ahead of the storm. 96.3 FM, 1370 AM, The Source.
Today will be sunny to partly cloudy and pleasant with a high of 80 to 84. Clear to partly cloudy tonight, low 64 to 69. And a nice day Thursday with a mix of clouds and sunshine. High on Thursday, 81 to 84. Partly sunny skies on Friday, high 82 to 85. Watch for a stray shower on Saturday. From the Florida Weather Center, I'm Holly Holdren.
You know what you want to do in retirement, but do you know how to get there? Join Gary and Don Crawford of Pinnacle Retirement Advisors for Retirement with Pinnacle, Saturday mornings at nine, to get answers to your retirement planning questions. Plan today so you can do the things you've always dreamt about doing in retirement. Don't miss Retirement with Pinnacle with Gary and Don Crawford, Saturday mornings at nine. Firm offers insurance services, investment advisory services offered only by duly-registered individuals through A Wealth Management LLC.
This hour of Ocala Talks is brought to you in part by Blockers Furniture. Go see all their specials at BlockersFurniture.com.
This is Ocala Talks with Tom Schmidt, bringing stories that are important to our community in Anarod, Ocala.
Plus, of course, a splash of sports as well.
Now, here's your host, Tom.
Welcome back to Ocala Talk. Six two two nine six two two is the number to call. If you want to get in on the discussion, we're talking about the firing last night of city council, city manager Sandra Wilson. Uh, the Star Banner has come out with an article that goes a little bit more into the report. Uh, there was a completed report that stemmed from a whistleblower complaint. The report completed by the internal city auditor addressed a complaint about how top city employees handled contracts for banking services, bill printing, mailing, and e-bill presentment, and electronic payments. The auditor was critical of the way the contracts were handled and offered several recommendations. Uh, Mansfield said he felt strongly that city officials need to be held to a higher standard. Um, uh, Drier echoed those by saying there's no excuse for this. Like I told you, I knew Jim Hilty had said he made his decision based on what he'd seen since he took office, and, uh, he said, uh, he said that he had seen a lack of leadership, and he excited, he actually gave an example, uh, that I was not aware of. Last month, uh, when the city was hit by the tornado that ripped through, stayed on the ground 26 miles, stayed through, instead of, uh, staying here, Sandra Wilson was here when it happened, and instead of staying here to oversee the emergency, she said, I gotta go to Washington. And she left to go to Washington, DC for a, for meetings, and, uh, Jim Hilty said, those people in DC would have understood if she canceled because her city was hit by a tornado, and she had to stay home to deal with the after effects of a tornado, and I agree with him 100%.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, if you, you know, that, 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 I didn't know that happened. That is, that's just, once again, she doesn't live here. She's not invested here.
Yep.
We had a call during the break. A caller said that they, they, they didn't want to go on the air, but wanted to say that they, it was a very good point. The other caller had made about, we need a city manager that lives in the city, or at least lives in the county, and brought up the fact that Beth McCall, who is a lifelong resident of Marion County, was elected to the school board, and I know the law says if you don't live in the district, you gotta, you can't be on the school board in that district. She moved not out of the county, not out of the, she just moved blocks away from where she was, but it left one district and went to the other district. She gave her seat up. She had to. Gave her seat up, and, you know, so that, that was a very good point by the caller that, and I know it's a constitutionally-elected official versus an appointed official that's hired by the city council. I understand it's apples and oranges in a lot of ways. But the, the fact that Beth McCall just moved blocks and gave up her position, and here the city manager didn't even live in the county, and then I had no idea that right after the tornado, instead of staying here and overseeing the, the safety of her city, she left to go to Washington, DC because she had meetings.
Yeah, that, that's unacceptable. I mean, you need to be here for, for your city and manage what's going on for the recovery from that, you know, during that process.
And look, I've been critical of Sandra Wilson. I, I, I think that she doesn't have control of mainly Bill Kaufman. Uh, but I read the things Whitehead wrote in the firing of the fire chief. I mean, they were handwritten all, if you're letting your, the people right under you do those kind of things, you know, I, I've been critical of her. But I've not been as critical of city council for not, not removing her. I just read in the statement that Iri Bithia gave last night at the city council. He's the president of the city council. Hold on, big guy. He goes, Iri Bithia said about the whistleblower complaint, such concerns like that are part of life.
Really?
Yeah, part of life. And here's what gets me. He said, look, Sandra Wilson can't know everything that goes on within her organization. I agree, Iri. She can't know when a, 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 a group of, uh, tree cutters are going out to clear branches from electrical lines that may be blocking, maybe needing to be cut so that they don't interfere with the electrical service. Yeah, and I agree. She, she can't know everything. She can't know every time they go pump a sewer or clean out a drain.
Right.
She can't know every time that the street sweeping truck goes and sweeps the dirt and litter off the street. I agree 100%. We're not talking about that. We're talking about people, assistant city managers, people that she interacts with every day. She damn well better have known what they were doing.
Yeah.
And if she didn't, that's why she's out of a job.
Absolutely, yeah.
And as you, the president of the city council, well, she can't know everything going on, huh? She damn well better know what's going on with her staff that works directly under her, and that's who this whistleblower was referring to. Those people. Not the guy driving the sweep, uh, street sweeping truck, not the guy hanging off the back of the city garbage truck. She talking about the people that are directly underneath her, that she interacts with and has conversations with on a daily basis.
Yep.
And for you as a city council member and president of the city council, to be so asinine as to say, she can't know everything they're doing all the time? Maybe when it comes time, we need to vote you out of office. Because maybe you don't have what it takes to be a proper guider of the community. That is such an asinine statement. To say, well, she can't know everything that's going on. That's her damn job. Are you kidding me with that statement? She can't know everything, and that's why she's out of a job. I mean, he said, you gotta let the person do their job. How was that working?
Right.
If she didn't know what the people directly underneath her were doing, was she doing her job? When she left to go to Washington, DC to go to meetings, instead of stay here to see about the safety of her city after a tornado, was she really doing her job? Are you really doing your job of protecting the community, Iri Bithia, by making asinine statements like this? Or are you just trying to protect somebody who you think that you can control? Man, that was just a, that just was not a good statement. She can't know everything going on. What the hell is she there for if she can't know what's going on right underneath her? Counsel, he also went on to say, there's a disagreement. We can talk about it. He doesn't think the concerns raised in the whistleblower complaint constituted a firing offense. I don't know what's in the whistleblower complaint.
No?
But I promise you, there's more in the whistleblower complaint than leaving a car idling too long.
Well, you also wonder, I mean, it was a very close vote, 3-2. I mean, so I guess two people also thought that maybe it wasn't as.
Him, him and Jay Musley thought that they weren't firing offenses. And I asked both of them, well, what is a firing offense? Because you didn't, you didn't stop her from firing Shane Alexander for what wasn't firing offenses?
Right.
He asked some fire, fire officials, and the president of other fire officials, if they were going to donate to some charities. He left his car idling too long, uh, you know. By the way, anytime you go to a crime scene or fire something, just look at all the cars that are idling.
Yeah.
Okay? That's part of the job.
Yeah.
And those are firing offenses, but whatever's in this whistleblower complaint, which is deemed bad enough that the auditor said, recommended changes, and it's been turned over to the authorities to see if there's any criminal liability? That sounds a hell of a lot worse than he left his car running too long. And they sure fired the chief over that?
No.
Iri Bithia, that, in my mind now, he's a joke. He, he's just a joke now as a, as a politician. A joke. That's laughable. First off, he said, these kind of whistleblower things, that's just part of life. Huh? Well, I mean, there's some out, you know, uh, the city's running efficiently. No, it's not. If it was running efficiently, we wouldn't be losing linemen at an alarming rate in the electrical, uh, in the electric side of the city. If the city was running efficiently, we wouldn't have had the hiccup that we had with Sandra Wilson firing the fire chief because she thought he was coming after her job. If the city was running efficiently, you wouldn't have had two votes in less than a year about the confidence of the city manager. If the city was running efficiently, you wouldn't have to be about to pay $80 million back in fire fees. You know, I know it's horse country, but somebody needs to take the blinders off, Iri Bithia. Man, I mean, he just, one, one comment after another that makes no sense. It's asinine, his position, in my opinion. She can't know everything that goes on within her organization. We're not talking about the whole organization, Iri. We're talking about things that go on with the people directly underneath her, that answer to her on a daily basis. If she don't know what the hell they're doing, she don't need to be city manager.
I agree.
How, how more plain is that? And by the way, she's not anymore. Pete Lee is.
Right.
But for the president of the city council to say these kind of asinine comments, the city's running efficiently. Is the city running efficiently when the city manager bails during a, uh, natural disaster to go have meetings in Washington, DC? Is the city running efficiently as you just had to borrow $60 million of $80 million to pay back fire fees that you took in unconstitutionally? Is a city running efficiently when you have an open discord and an open argument with the group of attorneys that you hired to be the city attorneys? Remember, city council meeting about a month ago, it was brought, brought into question about the abilities of the city attorneys, who, by the way, vehemently told the city where they could go with their concerns. How is any of that remotely efficient? What, what'd they say in, uh, The Princess Bride? I do not think that word you're using means what you think it means. Because I don't think you know what efficient means. Because it damn sure ain't what you're talking about. Six two two nine six two two is the number to call. Six two two nine six two two is the number to call. If you want to weigh in on this subject, uh, you know, I'm sure there's people that think Sandra Wilson was doing a good job. But there were three city council members that tossed you out, and that's all it takes. Whether the city council president likes it or not. He believes that the city is running efficiently. $80 million in debt over fire fees. Twice within a year, con, no confidence vote for the city manager. You got an internal whistleblower report that says there was some less than, less than desirable actions dealing with banking contracts that were negotiated by one of the, somebody right under Sandra Wilson. That's not something you let the guy on the back of the garbage truck negotiate.
No.
Yeah, city's running efficient there, Iri. Good job. We'll be back after this timeout. You're listening to Ocala Talks, 1370 AM, 96.3 FM. This is W O C A, The Source.
Are you wasting time boxing up packages and going to the post office or the UPS store? Are you tired of not knowing what you'll pay when you get there? Just Ship offers pickup service and flat rate packaging and postage rates, which takes the guesswork out of shipping while saving you time and money. So quit wasting valuable time and money. Call or text Just Ship at 352-234-3840. That's 352-234-3840. Just Ship.
Hi, this is JP from Penn Flooring here in Ocala. I would like to invite you to come in and visit our spacious showroom where we have solutions for every style and budget. From wall-to-wall carpet to hardwood floors and tiles, we have an unsurpassed selection of flooring. At Penn Flooring, we've provided quality customer service with a family touch for over 25 years. Visit our website at pennflooring.com or come by our showroom. 1201 Southwest 17th Street, just over the bridge. Penn Flooring, quality customer service with a family touch.
It's Bo time. Ever taste something so good you just get hooked? Like the Bojangler, the only fish sandwich splash with Bo's famous seasoning. So we're having a fish fry, Bojangler style. Spicing up premium fish fillets with the good stuff and slathering them with melty cheese and tangy tartar sauce to hook your taste buds with just one bite. Reel in a Bojangler today, only at Bojangles.
Get the Bojangler, 4828 Southwest College Road here in Ocala.
Blockers Furniture is having a truckload sale. Right now, you can save 20% on sofas and love seats when you mention radio. Blockers 80,000 square foot showroom is home to the largest in-stock selection of living rooms, bedrooms, dining rooms, unique furniture accents, outdoor furniture, and more. That means you can take your furniture home that same day or have it delivered. Check out the Blockers Sleep Gallery, too. They carry a huge selection of mattresses, including all the name brands you love. Blockers Furniture Truckload Sale. 2402 Southwest College Road, Ocala, next to Hobby Lobby.
Certain restrictions apply. See store for details.
Are you tired of living with chronic pain, knee pain, joint pain? Listen carefully, because now there are new treatments available here. Not talking surgery or steroids. These are regenerative treatments from the medical professionals at QC Kinetics. Now with offices in Ocala and the villages. Hey, everybody, this is Tom Schmidt. QC Kinetics is the leader in these exciting biological therapies that help restore and repair damaged tissues in your joints with lasting results. If you've got pain in your knees, your shoulders, hips, back, like I do, joint pain that won't go away, you need to check out these new treatments with astonishing patient satisfaction reports. They can actually help your body restore and repair itself with no downtime, no drugs, and no surgery.
restore and repair itself with no downtime, no drugs, and no surgery. That's right, no surgery. Don't go through another year with that awful joint pain and don't let them put you under the knife. Call QC Kinetics now for a free consultation. There's offices in Ocala and the villages. So give them a call, three five two four zero zero forty-five fifty. That's three five two four zero zero forty-five fifty.
Good credits, bad credits, it's none of our business because we're not an auto dealer. We're not a bank. We're not your mother. We're OcalaForSale.com. Marion County's marketplace for cars, trucks, and SUVs. We've got thousands of sellers standing by to take your call. No middleman. But hurry, don't walk, don't run. Just sit down and log on to OcalaForSale.com. Prices and inventory change daily. Offered as an included dealer upcharge. Undercutting risk, proof, and factory search charge or delivery fee. See website for details.
Hey there, Congresswoman Kat Camac here, your conservative voice in our nation's capital. I'm so proud to be an advocate for the over sixty-five thousand veterans here in North Central Florida. The new Ocala VA clinic is now open, providing important primary care and specialty services. If you're a veteran in the Ocala area, thank you for your service. Feel free to get in touch with our team by visiting us online at camac.house.gov. I'm Kat Camac and it is my honor to serve you.
This ad is paid for by official funds authorized by the U.S. House of Representatives.
You know what you want to do in retirement, but do you know how to get there? Tune in to Coasting Into Retirement with Gary Marriage of Nature Coast Financial Advisors, Sunday mornings at eight to get answers to your retirement planning questions. Plan today so you can do the things you've always dreamt about doing in retirement. Listen, Sunday mornings at eight to Coasting Into Retirement with Gary Marriage of Nature Coast Financial Advisors.
Our firm offers insurance services.
Now you've done it. Have you lost your mind? He's back and you're listening again. A legend in his own mind. Don't believe me? Just ask him. Here's Tom Schmitz live on W O C A, the source.
Welcome back to Ocala Talk. Six two two nine six two two is the number if you want to weigh in. A lot of people texting me, sending me emails, Facebook posts. Um, one guy who watched it online said, uh, there was an exchange between the city council president, Iri Bethia Senior. Uh, don't want to confuse him with Junior because you know Junior's in a lot of trouble. So we don't want to, we don't want to confuse Senior and Junior. Iri Bethia Senior, who's the city council president, the mayor wanted to give his thoughts on this and Iri piped in and goes, you don't have a vote on the subject. The mayor, look, don't go after Kent and go in because Kent, Kent will, Kent will put you in your place. Kent said he may not have a vote, but he's got a voice of an opinion on the situation and let his opinion be known. So, you know, good for Kent for stepping up to the, uh, city council president and saying, you, you ain't the boss of me. But this story still is evolving, but when I read this article, because I have not yet, I, I have to go back tomorrow. I've, I've seen bits and pieces of the exchanges, but I hadn't watched the whole thing un, unedited so I could watch it all. And, uh, because it did happen late last night and I was working last night doing trivia, so I didn't get to go to city council. But, uh, when I saw that Iri Bethia believes that, ah, these whistleblower things, that's just part of life, deal with it. You know, whistleblower says somebody's doing something and, you know, they do an audit and it shows they're doing it, big deal, it's just part of life. I mean, just, just part of life, you know, you know, that to me is like, you know, if you're out walking in the wilderness and everything, the snake bites you, big deal, it's just part of life.
Yeah.
Just part of life. Don't worry about it. Just snake bite, who cares? Just part of life. Then he says that she couldn't know everything that goes on with her organization. I would hope she knows about negotiations about banking and the city and banking.
Right.
I'd hope she, he, she'd know about, you know, the, the way people make electronic payments to the city. I think that'd be pretty important for the city manager to know. All these are things that the auditor said were problems. I mean, the auditor said the problems, the complaints were about how top city employees, there's the key folks, top city employees, that means people right under Sandra, handled contracts for banking services, bill printing, mailing, e-bill presentment, and electronic payments. I think all that's pretty damn important for the city manager to know about.
Yes.
I just, Iri Bethia Senior. Got to get that in there. Got to get that in there. He, he just blindly supported, supported Sandra Wilson and it sounds like trying to make excuses for her. Well, she can't know everything. I mean, really, she can't know everything. Well, she damn sure should know about all those things. She may not know about, you know, where the garbage trucks pick up on Tuesdays. She may not know about where the street sweeper is tomorrow, but she damn sure better know where electronic payments are coming in and what the negotiations were and what companies were negotiated with and how those negotiations went. And if she doesn't know those things, then she has no control over the people that are underneath her that are doing these negotiations. The news is just around the corner. You're listening to thirteen seventy AM, ninety-six point three FM. It says W O C A, the source.
USA Radio News with Lance Pry. President Biden will convene top U.S. military leaders today in the annual White House gathering that takes on special significance as the war in Ukraine rages on. In attendance will be Defense Secretary Lloyd Austin, General Mark Milley, the chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, and senior military leaders. The commander of the last Ukrainian force in Mariupol pleaded Wednesday with world leaders to help, saying that their end is near. The thirty-sixth separate Marine Brigade, Ukraine's final stronghold in Mariupol, resisted earlier demands to surrender and had held out despite being vastly outnumbered ten to one. The Star Wars franchise Mandalorian has lost one of its actors.
Victory through combat is impossible. We will be captured. The child will be lost. Sadly, there is no scenario where the child is saved and which I survive.
Fifty-one-year-old Rio Hackford, the voice behind the droid bounty hunter, passed away last week in Huntington Beach, California. USA Radio News.
If you're like most Americans, you're pretty much in disbelief with what's going on in the world. As we all know, global problems are having local consequences. Too many of them. And if the peanut butter really hits the fan, are you ready? Grocery store supply chains are only as strong as their weakest link. Don't wait for them to break. Now's the time to secure emergency food for everyone in your family. My Patriot Supply is America's largest preparedness company. Our specially packaged and delicious food stays fresh for up to twenty-five years in storage. It'll be there when you need it. Go to mypatriotsupply.com and pick up several emergency food kits. There are a dozen different sizes that average over two thousand calories per day. Our food kits will ship quickly and discreetly to your door. Having food storage in your home beats government food lines hands down. Go to mypatriotsupply.com today and prepare for what's coming. Mypatriotsupply.com.
Form sofa, which is insanely comfortable. It looks...
You're getting ready to move and you work hard. That's why you call Two Men in a Truck, three five two two eight nine zero six six six. You need pros. Train professional moving experts to do the heavy lifting for you. That's why you call Two Men in a Truck, three five two two eight nine zero six six six. They care about your things as much as you do and they do it fast and right. That's why you call Two Men in a Truck, three five two two eight nine zero six six six. Visit twomeninatruck.com and get moving.
Two men in a truck.
Nobody does spring planting like Rural King and nobody beats our prices on farm and home favorites like our own lawn and garden batteries for just nineteen ninety-nine or one cubic foot bags of all-purpose topsoil, just one eighty-nine apiece. And everything looks better with fresh mulch. Get two cubic foot bags in Cypress, red, brown, or black, just two forty-nine apiece. Stock up today at ruralking.com or your neighborhood Rural King, America's farm and home store.
By now, all of central Florida knows that at Bob Wine's, you always buy one tree at its super low price and you get a second one just like it for half price. That means you get a large tree up to six feet tall for less than forty dollars. You get a second one just like it for twenty dollars. You walk out with two nice trees for less than sixty dollars. Almost unbelievable. You got to come see for yourself. And while you're there, check the bogos on Bush daisies, Confederate jasmine, plumbeego, perslane, and many more. Got a garden question? Bring your photos, we can fix it. This is the week for big bargains at Bob Wine's Camellia Garden. So come on out and walk this five acre garden. They're open nine to four thirty daily, Saturdays till three on Southeast Thirty-Eighth Street in Ocala, soon to be celebrating seventy years in the same blooming location. We'll see you there this week at Bob Wine's Camellia Garden.
Don't go through another year with that awful joint pain. Now there's an exciting new treatment using natural biologics, regenerative solutions that can restore and repair damaged tissue in your joints. Hey folks, it's Tom Schmitz and I'm talking about QC Kinetics, now open here. QC Kinetics is the nation's leader in non-surgical regeneration. Highly concentrated natural biologics that can give you lasting relief. If you have pain in your knees, back, shoulder, hips, and you're tired of steroids, tired of pain meds, and talk of major surgery, this is the treatment you've been hoping for. Call the medical professionals at QC Kinetics today for a free consultation. Learn about how natural biologics can be used to get you moving again pain-free. Listen, don't let them keep giving you steroids. Don't let them tell you your surgery is your only option. Get a free second opinion at QC Kinetics. Do it now and imagine life in twenty twenty-two without pain. Call QC Kinetics now for a free consultation. They have offices now in Ocala and the villages. Call three five two four zero zero forty-five fifty. That's three five two four zero zero forty-five fifty.
Howdy folks, RL here for Dairy Queen again to tell you about what's hot and what's not. Dairy Queen has some of the best char-grilled chicken breasts on earth as well as their chicken breast salad. And the burgers are exceptional, cooked on a real grill for the best flavor and less fat. And for dessert, blizzards are unequal. Perslane, banana split is my all-time favorite. Dairy Queen Silver Springs, where we always treat you like kings and queens.
Now you've done it. Have you lost your mind? He's back and you're listening again. A legend in his own mind. Don't believe me? Just ask him. Here's Tom Schmitz live on W O C A, the source.
Welcome back. It's Ocala Talk. Coming up in about ten minutes, Yvette from Go Green CBD is in the building and I have strict instructions from my wife about what I need to bring up, the subject I need to bring up with her. It's going to have to do, you know, with our, with our babies and how CBD can be used to help them as, two of them are ten years old and getting along in life and, uh, you know, one, one of my dogs has joint pain and everything. So we're going to talk to Yvette about, look, CBD is not just for adults. It's not just for people. It can also help your fur babies as well. And we'll talk to Yvette about the, uh, types of stuff she has that's designed for your loved ones, your, your, your four-legged loved ones and how you can help them without costly surgery, without costly pharmaceuticals from your vet, how CBD can help them as well. We'll talk to Yvette from Go Green CBD in just a few minutes. Uh, somebody texted me during the break and said, Tom, you keep referencing Bill Kaufman. How do you know he's in the report? I said, I don't. I'm referencing Bill Kaufman because he was Sandra's second, second, you know, he was her right hand and he didn't get the push from city council to become the city manager. And you would think he was next in line. So if he, if he didn't get the, the nod, why not? Is he involved with this letter? Was he the one that was doing these negotiations? I don't know. I hadn't seen the audit. But I, I can, I can infer from them not, you know, even if he wasn't, city council didn't have any confidence in him or he'd be the city manager. Pete Lee was confirmed five to nothing as the interim manager. I mean, and, and being that this was turned over to the authorities to see if there's any criminal liability, is that why they passed over Bill Kaufman? Because he's the person named in this audit? I don't know. But it sure seems that way. What other, what other inference could you discern from them passing over or not giving to the guy who was second in charge really? I mean, I know there's no technically second in charge, but we all know Sandra Wil, the hierarchy was Sandra Wilson, Bill Kaufman, and everybody else. That was common knowledge. So did the city at least avoid a situation where they may have to do all this over again? Because the person they put in place could face criminal charges. I don't know. That's why they chose Pete Lee though, because Pete Lee, by the way, Pete Lee is as top-notch as it gets. Pete is, is, is one of the good guys. He, 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 he's done his job for years for the city. He, he serves at the pleasure of the city council. He said even in his, when they asked him, would you like, would you take the job? He goes, I serve at the desire of the city. But all these are questions that have to be answered and they're going to have to be answered pretty quick. Good morning, you're on Ocala Talks.
Good morning, Tom. I think I know why they didn't pick the assistant manager because he was too close to a fire, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, he, uh, this guy, I'm not making any inferences, but, uh, let's face it, you're the assistant, you're right next to the person that's in question and, uh, you could be influenced, if you know what I mean, to, uh, do certain things. So that's why, you know, I'm not just making anything, uh, saying anything that he's...
No, that's just your opinion. That's just your opinion of why they...
It's just my opinion and I think if I was in that case, uh, even if they nominated him, I, I would, uh, think twice about it, uh, before, until it, till the, till the dust settles, this, you know, and the smoke blows away.
Thanks for the call, Sonny.
I think it's too soon for this guy to step in, uh, right away.
Probably, you're probably right about that. That may be what they were thinking. Thanks for the call. Uh, you know, there's no way to know what they were thinking without, without the report, what they were using as reference, but I, I know they went with Pete Lee. And you got to draw, you know, everybody's going to draw opinions and conclusions on why that happened. Is Bill Kaufman the higher-ups, one of the higher-ups that was doing this negotiation that Sandra Wilson didn't seem to know about? I mean, it's a valid question. You know, it... There, there was, there was, you know, some inference that this was maybe not done. And now that we know that this has been turned over to the authorities to see if there's any criminal liability, we know it's not done. And I'm, I'm efforting to get a copy of what this internal audit was. Now that it's been introduced to city council in a open forum, it's going to become, it's public record now. So I will be able to get it, uh, with a records request in the next day or so. And then I'll go over it and see exactly what, what was entailed there and who was doing the negotiations. But if I was a betting man, oh, wait, I am, I'd bet that Bill Kaufman had something to do with this audit. His name came up somewhere. Cause he was her right hand. If she didn't know about these negotiations, I hope to hell Bill Kaufman knew about it. I hope somebody in the city manager's office knew about it. So with that being said, was one of them, did one of them do something nefarious during these negotiations? We don't know. We hadn't seen the report yet. But I know that it's not, it's not something to be taken lightly or it wouldn't have been turned over to the authorities to see if there was any criminal liability. I mean, are arrests imminent? I don't know. Is the state's attorney's office going to have to chutzpah to make arrest if they're warranted? I know for a fact they will. State's attorney's office, they don't, they don't care about city politics. You break the law, they will prosecute you. It's that simple. So there may be arrest imminent. And believe me, if there are a warrant, if there is a warranted need for arrest, you better believe that they need to get, they need to do the right thing and arrest people. You know, I don't, I don't know what all happened here, but you, we're not dealing with subjects that you, are light subjects. We're dealing with improprieties or, uh, things that the auditor said he was critical of the way contracts were handled. Uh, and the contracts were for, um, banking services, bill printing. bill printing, mailing, e-bill presentment, and electronic payments. That's not light stuff. That's not the contract on what type of paper we use in the copy machines. That's not a contract on who brings in fresh rugs to city hall. That's not a contract on who the landscaper is of the flowers and grass at city hall. This is a contract on how the city collects payments electronically, people's credit card information, stuff like that. It's not light stuff. It's damn sure not letting your car idle too long. It's damn sure not having a conversation in a break room about have you guys contributed anything to the charity? Which got a fire chief fired? It's a hell of a lot more important than those issues. We'll see where it goes. Coming up next, Yvette from the Go Green CBD store at the Paddock Mall. She will join us. We're going to talk about CBD and how it can help your pets, among other things. We'll do that as we wrap up this Wednesday edition of Ocala Talks, 1370 AM, 96.3 FM. This is W O C A, the source.
Hey there, I have a question for you. Is your roof asphalt and doesn't look like it needs replacement? Did you get quotes and were you in sticker shock? Would you like to save not hundreds, but thousands of dollars? Did you call Roof Max? Well, call Roof Max with their patent pending technology, which can add years to your roof without needing to replace it. And it's easy. You just pick up the phone for a free quote. Plus, they use state-of-the-art satellite technology to measure your roof. So if your roof is over seven years old, then you should call Roof Max today at 352-639-2777. That's 352-639-2777.
Ugh, what wrong?
Ugh, need wood for fire.
Ugh, I go get. Ugh, I got wood for fire.
Ugh, what takes so long?
Had to use restroom, someone not refill toilet paper.
Ugh, my bad. You wash hands?
Ugh, of course. Ugh, what caveman you take me for?
You know, Dan, people who save money by switching to Mike Scott Plumbing sure are happy.
Well, Brittany, how happy are they?
Happier than a caveman with indoor plumbing.
Yep. Get happy. Get Mike Scott Plumbing. If water runs through it, we do it.
Hello, I'm Mark Sears with Regency Printing. With over 10 years in the printing business, I know you'll find Regency Printing the place for all your local printing needs. Plus, I have fax services, mailbox rentals, no reservice, US mail, pack and ship, all at one convenient location, 2375 Northeast 25th Avenue, just look for the yellow signs. Regency Printing, 789-6683. That's 789-6683. Regency Printing.
What do you think of when I say great myrtles? Well, you should say Bob Wine's Camellia Gardens in Ocala, because that's where you'll find Florida's biggest and best selection of great myrtles at the lowest prices. Just take a look, starting with the nice number four size, more than a dozen colors, starting at just $29.99, all the way up to the huge number 15 size for $3.99. Buy one, get one at half price, delivered, planted, and guaranteed. And of course, how about azaleas? Dwarf ever blooming red ruffel azaleas are still priced at a super low $3.99 each. Bush daisies and more are all on VOGO. Buy one, get one.